I apologize for the delay. With that, I will at 7:03 call to order the September 13th meeting of the Westford School Committee. It's good to see everybody. We'll take a nice breath and a pause before we say our pledge together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And welcome to folks who are joining. We're not live, at home. So, welcome to folks joining us on Zoom and on YouTube and Westford Cat. Just to remember, I think we've talked about this before, you may find better audio if you watch the Westford Cat stream or the YouTube stream rather than the Zoom. But if you intend to make remote public comment, then Zoom is the way you're going to need to do that, or if you're here in person. And you could still have time if you live like five minutes away, you could get here in time for your live in-person public comment. For the committee, just try not to get too far away from the mics. I know that with the masks, sometimes the sound rolls off a little bit as you move away from the mic, so just kind of keep that in mind. And with that, we will go into our informational updates with superintendent update.
Well, it's been fantastic to have students in the building. It's awesome to have students with us tonight, too. This is awesome to have you guys joining us. This is our first full week, right? So going to three, then the four, and then this is the first full week of school now, so I think that's been great. Dr. Cleary and I were able to make it into all the schools the very first week, and I've already been visiting schools on Wednesdays, and so it's been, it has been very therapeutic to actually be in the buildings and to see, I think, all of the activity. On Friday, all of our grade three through 12 schools did different age-appropriate remembrances to commemorate the 20th anniversary of 9/11, and I think that was a special thing. Some of the schools participated in the statewide moment of silence, some of the schools did different announcements either later in the day, different things like that, which I think was great. We did receive some feedback recently about some concerns about some assemblies, and so I think it was, it's been important to know that since the beginning of school, actually, our older students have been participating in grade-level assemblies as well, too, and it's all been without incident, which I think is great. The morning meetings, which the elementary schools have used as a traditional community building activity, I think, for a long time, is something that's really important for them to explore, and so one of the schools held an assembly in their gym. Students were spaced out. It was an assembly about belonging, our theme for the year, which I think was fantastic, and some parents had shared some concerns about that afterwards. We've been talking about it as a leadership team, and I think the principals in all the different buildings were also looking to see, okay, well, as we continue to collect the data, I'll talk more about the COVID data, you know, during the COVID update, but, you know, are there ways in which to think of other options, think of ways that it would be appropriate to include different types of group meetings, looking at just all the different options that we have? And some of the schools have different facilities that allow for it than others, which I think also makes sense. So that's something that I think we've been talking about, so we're going to continue to explore that. We're going to continue, again, like I said, when we talk about the data later, I think that's also going to be informative as to the direction that we go there. But it is, it is, I think, the way in which to find the connections, I think, is really important. So I think the goal of building community is still the intent, and so we want to figure out how we can best do that. In addition to thinking about that and thinking about, I think, all of the different, I think the different issues that can come up as we are gathering together, we've also thought very carefully about our back-to-school night. And the idea that our classrooms are, I think, well-equipped to space the students that we have in those classrooms, the more we've been talking about it and thinking about it, I think bringing in twice as many people into some of those rooms doesn't make sense. And so we're looking to do our back-to-school nights virtually again. The principals will be communicating that, I think, to families. They'll figure out, I think, logistically, how it works best for their age level and for the different schedules that exist in a similar way that we did that last year.
And if there are any families who don't have access to logging in virtually, then they just reach out to the school, and we will make sure that they have appropriate access.
Right, thank you. And then the last thing that I had for the update was actually the SIR-3 survey. Would you?
Sure.
Sure?
Yes, so as you probably remember from last year, Westford is receiving SIR-3 funds, which is part of the American Rescue Plan Act. We will be receiving $587,000, and we, part of districts applying for this have to be sure that they have stakeholder input in order to figure out a plan for spending these funds. So we have a survey going out to many different stakeholder groups, just providing categories that fall under the appropriate usage of SIR-3 funds to see what people feel from their different lenses would be a highest priority. We'll be sending it to students, to families, to staff members, to citizens at large, to elected officials, town employees as well, just to have a broad spectrum of input. And the categories that we'll be asking about are social-emotional learning, facilities, COVID mitigation strategies, early childhood literacy and math supports, as well as academic remediation, and additional supports for special populations such as ELL, low income, special education, and others. So that will be coming out possibly tomorrow and maybe on Wednesday, and then we will be asking people to submit their responses by the 21st. And at that point, we will come back to you and share our findings and the superintendent's recommendation, and then the application deadline is October 4th to submit the application. And along the way, if there are any tweaks that need to be made, we can amend it along the way. So we have to spend those funds by September of 2024. Keep an eye out in your inbox.
That's the general updates. We have a couple of other updates in the evening, so.
Yep, great, thanks.
Could I just follow up?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, Chris, can I just come back to that issue on the assembly? Can you clarify, are we saying that schools, and I mean more elementary schools because they are an unvaccinated population, are we saying that assemblies are happening in the schools in Westford right now?
So what I said is that an assembly did happen
Yes.
in a school.
Yes.
We've talked about it in terms of, I think, there are a number of different events that are coming up where I think the principals would still like to explore opportunities that I think, based on their different resources, whether they want to have a Veterans Day Assembly outside, whether they want to do, you know, whether they're going to connect different grades to do, I think, different events. But we're not, we're not saying that just school assemblies are off the table, we want to think carefully about them, and I think that's the, that I think is the difference.
And I understand that, but I think what I'm trying to clarify is, are we going to have a situation, and I mean this was four days after Labor Day weekend as well, where people were traveling, where we are putting the entire school inside for an assembly two weeks into school where it's still gathering data? So I think I'm just trying to clarify is, I can understand having assemblies outside or doing them virtually, but in that instance, are we at this moment saying that if a school decides that they want an indoor assembly for the entire school, that that can happen? Because I kind of, my issue is, is how do we do the contact tracing as well in that instance?
Right, so that's actually, that's actually the point of the conversation that we were talking about when I was talking with the principals to say the different things that they think are the most important aspects of running their buildings. I talked about, we need to always be able to effectively contact trace, that's something that we have to do. I do think that that is possible in some scenarios, depending on how they plan to arrange themselves, right, for different events. So I don't want to say that, no, we're not going to do anything like that, we're going to have very careful conversations about it before, if someone feels like that is something that they want to do specifically at their school, we're going to be talking about it, because we want to make sure that, like I said, we can effectively know where everybody is located so that we can help our nurses in the event that they have to contact trace. Now, the other piece to that is that with the assemblies that have taken place, there hasn't been the need to do any contact tracing, right? So that's why we've been talking about, let's make sure that we don't find ourselves in a position where we can't do that. But I don't feel comfortable saying right now that absolutely, under no circumstances, will a school assembly take place. I think it's part of our constant reviewing of what's going on, and so what I do know is that the principals, we had a conversation on Friday where we all talked about this very specifically. So at this moment in time, there's not going to be a building in our district that's going to have a school assembly without talking to us about it.
Okay.
So that, I guess that's the best way I can answer right now. I don't feel comfortable just saying,
Yes, no.
No, we're not going to do it, because I, there might be a circumstance that would warrant it.
Have there been other assemblies in the elementary schools? Or is it just the one that?
I do not think that the other morning meetings took place
Okay.
in the same fashion now.
Okay.
Yeah.
I appreciate that question, and I appreciate that answer, because I think it does, it really elucidates the whole contact tracing piece, which is so critical, and, you know, I could imagine an assembly where you're taking classrooms, you know, and there's seating arrangement, and you're plopping it in a larger space, and there's other classrooms, and you still have kind of the adequate spacing, and you know where people are, and it sounds like, you know, that's, those are the kinds of considerations that we will be giving to any potential assembly. Thanks, any other comments or questions? Valerie?
Can you give an update on WA busing?
So.
Sorry?
Yeah. It's, that in itself still remains a moving target, and Principal Antonelli is with us right now. There's, I do believe that our waitlist has been lifted, right? I believe that we found
It was lifted by Wednesday.
Okay, it will be.
Jen Piper reached out to the 55, and we had a meeting with our new financial person, Pat, and the bus on Thursday, I believe it was, and we communicated to the parents, I think Jen made all those calls by the way to school on Friday, and then we planned to, the number of students that can go on a bus, we decide on 65. You can put up to 83, but we're involved, max hour is 65. Renee did indicate that if we're at 65, she may adjust some of the stops, trying to keep it minimal, but it's really happened to flow, some students taking them in. So, feel good about it, but so that she would take care of that when we got the buses, bus routes. The other couple pieces are that with that list going down, that's going to eliminate some cars coming to Westford Academy.
Yep.
That's why, because that is, right now, still a nightmare. I did talk with the chief last week, and we're going to work through, because in the town of Westford, there's a bylaw that says that citizens really shouldn't be out directing traffic. Let's take a look at that word of crossing guards and figure out whether or not that can be looked at in a different way, so that's a discussion that the chief and I are going to have, because we're all right now, out there every single morning for, you know, 40 minutes directing traffic, in the middle of the street. I do the crosswalk when the seniors come through, and it's just, even with that, it's just crazy. So those are some positive measures that we're trying to do, and then the other piece was that I talked with Renee again this morning, is we're trying to get students there upwards to seven o'clock, earliest, and I know that's still very early, the school is a start of 7:35, but they're short six drivers, six buses, and she's working to try and up that number of buses, but that's a national, so you can think about Boston right now, just, I heard this afternoon about the Coast Guard, not the Coast Guard, the National Guard helping out with some of these issues. So this is not just Westford-centric, this is throughout our country that we're having this issue.
So if anybody watching wants to drive a bus?
I reached out last week, I had an email on substitutes, and we have only 10 people that are going to come in for substitutes.
Yep, great.
Awesome.
That's great.
Chris?
You also, again, talked about, I know you just said this too, but I know there were some concerns that parents had about being dropped off or waiting on the bus, right? Like the bus was getting there, and then they weren't letting them out until seven, and so you were also, you talked with the bus about that as well, too.
That happened again this morning, I think it was something a little bit lost in translation, because there's so much going on, but I pulled in to try and get in my spot this morning, and I saw three buses, and I saw kids on buses, so I immediately called Renee, I talked with the bus driver, so it's been clarified, they get off the bus as soon as they get to Westford Academy and come in, we're fine with that, so.
Those, oh, sorry.
I was just going to ask a follow-up, is, how does that work with our contract? I mean, I know it's not under their control that they don't have driver, enough drivers, but is there, is there like a time limit that we, if this was the whole year at 30 buses instead of 36, would we do something?
Well, if, depending on how long, and I think it extends, as long as the problem, as long as the problem extends, because we, as Pat has been, I think, doing a great job communicating with them, they do realize that they're not meeting
Right.
their contracted obligation, but we're also trying to figure out, okay, our goal is not to
Right.
just stick with the 30, like our goal is to still try to get to the full 36 buses, so we're going to kind of cross that bridge when we get there.
One piece, just to finish off, I'm sorry, is in regard to athletics, and last year, you know, parents had to drive student athletes to the events. That may be something that comes to the forefront again, and Jeff Bynum, our athletic director, put something out to parents, we don't anticipate it right now, but it could be a possibility where we're asking parents to get a drive to an athletic event, because if we get short when the drivers, it's a situation. So I want to get the parents to know that ahead of time, that we could go, we could fall back to that.
So I wonder then, if, I know there were problems at Stony Brook last week where we had some buses that were arriving, at least one bus that was arriving after the doors had already closed, too, so I wonder if that, the rebalancing at WA will help rebalance at Stony as well? And do we anticipate, I know there was also some traffic concerns at Stony, and there was, reached out to Westford PD to help with WA and with Stony, I know NAB is chaotic in the afternoons. What is the situation, what's the current status of working with WPD for sort of these traffic congestion areas? I know we still have to go through, you know, you have to get through the first couple of weeks of school, everyone has to get used to things, you know, you get back into the swing of things, but I think some of our schools are becoming bottlenecks that are, can be quite dangerous, especially when you're talking about that left hand onto 40, so can you give us an update as to what's happening there?
Well, like Jim was saying, we are talking with Westford Police Department, I think those are all different situations, right?
Yes, all of them.
Like the Westford, the academy situation is very different than NAB.
Yep.
The situation at Stony Brook is more about the traffic on Route 40 than it is
Right, right.
any of the traffic at Stony Brook
Yes.
because it's about that, and that intersection honestly has, that's always been that way, right?
Right.
So I know that there, I know that the chief is looking at that, the chief is going to, you know, try to look at these different scenarios to, through their lens to see what is something that they can assist with, what is something that the schools can assist with, are there things that we need to do for the, for the specific traffic around the schools that's different than anything we did last year? So those conversations are taking place, I think they are all very different.
Yes, absolutely.
And I got a, just a reminder to people waiting that we do have policy about not idling your car if it's stopped for more than, I forget the number of minutes, three or five, I don't know. I know it's difficult, I know that sometimes the line is creeping and you don't know, but I certainly have seen times when it's clear you're not going anywhere for 10, 15 minutes, I'm thinking WA afternoon pickup, and I know it's hot, but like, you know, you got to open those windows and turn the car off, and it just, it's gotten better, the traffic in the morning, I got to say, but, you know, like, I think it was yesterday morning where I was like, oh, it's so much better, and that you were, you were holding the students, no, sorry, Friday, Friday morning, you were holding the students at the crosswalk, and I think that made a huge difference, so I was like, oh, that's a great idea, and then I was like, well, that shouldn't be, he should not be spending his time on that, right? Having to spend his time on that, so yeah, you know, exactly, we'll get there and appreciate, like, the all-hands-on-deck to make it safer. And you're right, though, it does, too, I think it's the beginning of the year thing, too, a little bit, I'm guessing, right? You get some tapering and things, so, so just, yeah, thanks for keeping everybody safe and doing whatever it takes. Okay, anything else? All right, let's go to school committee updates. Alicia?
Update that's not an update, but policy has not yet met with our new configuration for this year, but we're planning on starting next week, and I know we'll talk about your entry plan later, but a lot of the focus that we're going to be, a lot of what we're going to focus on this year is sort of the things that got left behind during COVID, and a lot of the equity updates that we had talked about doing in the last couple of years, so if you don't subscribe to those, you should subscribe to the meeting updates, policy will begin meeting, we're going to do a rotating every other week on Tuesday morning, in-person meeting, so keep an eye on your email inboxes for that.
Yeah, I'm speaking, I'm meeting with Catherine Wednesday?
Yes.
And we're, I'm going to assimilate her into air table.
Air table.
Yeah.
He's going to be one. He can get a cup of tea if he's lucky.
There you go.
He probably has T-shirts that he hands out.
I'm sure. I think he gets paid, he gets commission.
I should, I should. I went to a town and school safety task force meeting last week, it was that, it was the kind of the mental health subset, subgroup, and it's just worth noting that there is a job description being developed, it's in draft form, for a town-wide wellness coordinator, I'm trying to think, there was another word in there, too, that I wanted to put in there, but community wellness coordinator, yeah. So this would be an individual who would help people in need identify resources available to them in the area, there was some discussion about whether they might also be, you know, track individuals who are in need and follow up and see, did they get the resources, and there, it's unclear whether that would also fall into that job description, but that was a kind of a want that people mentioned, that that would be nice to have that sort of overview from somebody, so that's something to look out for, that may be, or should be coming soon. Any other school committee updates? Okay, that means it's time for student representative updates, and can you two introduce yourselves? Since we haven't seen Hannah in a while, and Megna, we haven't seen you officially, so.
So I'm Megna, I'm a junior at WA, and yeah, this is my first year doing this.
I'm Hannah, I'm a senior at Westford Academy, and this is my second year, and I'm happy to be back. It's the first week of school, so we don't have too many student updates for you, but we had our first student council meeting this past week, we have freshman elections coming up, we had our first Friday night football game, which was a huge success, so everyone was pretty stoked about that. Masking is going pretty well within our classrooms, at least that I've seen.
Yeah, gym classes are going outside, so it's good to get some fresh air during the day, teachers are reinforcing the masks over the nose specifically, a couple of times I've heard teachers point that out. Other than that, just a lot happening at school right now, but, you know, students are managing it, I think, pretty well, and so are the, so are the teachers. A lot of big, a lot of big changes from last year, so it's going to be interesting how we go about navigating that, for instance, like the holiday buzz hour and everything like that with the student council events that we host for the school, but I think as of right now, it's going well.
And are students finding a way to get out and take a mask break? Are you noticing? It's a little harder, we don't have the long passing time this year.
Yeah, it's definitely harder between classes. I've found myself rushing to class a few times, but a lot of my teachers have taken us on walks if we have extra time, so we're definitely getting outside at some point. A lot of people go out at lunch, too, in the tent, or just, you know, for a few minutes, so.
Right.
Yeah, I think the gym classes are a nice time to get out, and then we also have a courtyard, so, you know, when you're passing, and I think one big thing is, okay, with the smaller passing times, at least we don't have one-way hallways, which was, I don't know, a big problem for me, because I'd come up the stairs, my class was to the right, but I'd had to take four hallways
Yeah.
to get there, so I think that that's at least a little bit better in terms of breathlessness with the mask, so yeah.
Good.
It's not easy, but.
Well, thanks for that update, thanks for being here tonight, and we look forward to having you guys this year. And with that, we are on public comment, and so I'll start in the room, any public comment? Look at you, all right. Okay, okay, then I'm looking online, and we do have a hand raise, so I'm going to bring Derek. And can you see over there? I might have brought two people in by mistake, sorry. Sorry to Beth, who probably doesn't want to be brought in.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, Derek, hi.
Am I recognized?
Yes, go, yeah, go ahead, you have the floor, Derek.
Introduce yourself.
Yeah, can you introduce yourself? Give your name and address, please.
Sure, Derek Lowe, 77 Fort Willis Road, Westford. I wanted to make a comment tonight regarding the mascot survey, which I understand, which I understand will be discussed later this evening, the item, and I just wanted to share a few words, I mean, obviously, I'm a member of the town DEI committee as well as co-chair of the committee on school education, as well as a Class of 2018, I always tend to be, personally, the two things I wanted to mention were, having looked at the recommendation, I'm rather concerned that this recommendation did not fully take into account the BIPOC community at the school, it mentioned that there were attempts with Dr. Chan to create a focus group that would include members of the BIPOC community, but it seems that there were very few members that were able to, but I think if the administration at Westford Academy could take a more, a harder look and place some more effort in reaching out to marginalized students in our schools, we could actually be able to form a focus group, and I think it was not appropriate to make this recommendation without actually having fully consulted members of the BIPOC community in Westford. The other thing I would also point to is the survey that was shared in the memo, which I think that, the first question, I think, was totally appropriate in kind of, kind of adding, underscoring the need for discussion within Westford Academy about the mascot, but I am deeply concerned that the second question immediately asked for whether students believe that the mascot should be chained away. I think if the ultimate goal is to actually be able to have a productive dialogue and be able to ensure that all perspectives are being heard and that we're making educated decisions about the mascot, I think this question should not have been there, and instead, we should do further education about this issue, and then from there, allow hope that students can get afterwards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Derek. Anybody else on Zoom here to make public comment? If so, you can raise your hand in Zoom, at the bottom of your Zoom window. Okay, seeing none there, we will close public Okay, seeing none there, we will close public comment and we will move on to old business. And first item is DESI COVID guidance update.
Okay. So the, one of the things that I, I'm gonna talk about a couple of things that are not with the, the numbers that I think you, you all have access to those numbers now, right? We did get feedback from WEA, which is one of the things that, that we were waiting for. And so they shared with us that out of, currently they have four hundred and ninety members in their five units. And of those members, four hundred and nine participated in the survey, in the vaccine survey, which is eighty-three point four percent. Christine Gisom put that together for us, which I think is, thank you, Ms. Gisom. She did wanna remind us that this survey is from members only and it did not represent the vaccine rates among everybody in the building yet. But this was a start because we were curious as to that information. Of the members who took the survey, ninety-eight point eight percent are vaccinated and one point two are not vaccinated. So that again is of the eighty-three percent that took the survey and it's still not everybody, but it gives us a, it gives us a, you know, a direction, right? So that then, we still don't know, DESI has still not articulated to us as to how we would need to. I just wanna say prove, but how, how we would need to validate, if you will, our vaccination rates if they continue to use that as one of the data points as we approach October first. So this is, you know, they, they asked for this information, which I think is great. We can still also ask the same information of all of our employees as well too, which will give us a, a better number. But I, I really appreciate the effort of WEA to, to, um, to reach out first to, to ask these questions. I think it's been very helpful. I also, as of today, one thousand two hundred and forty-six students have consent from a parent to participate in the testing program. Nine students have, their parents said they did not want them to participate. Now, that's still only really a quarter of our enrollment in general, but it's also open, right? So when I put the, the information out there, I didn't put a deadline because we didn't have all of our resources yet. So we didn't know when we were gonna start the testing program. So I, it's still open and we'll still remind people that it's available to them. The principals were, were gonna put it in their weekly updates as well too, to kind of remind people. So that's where we're at at this moment in time. I met with, uh, the, I met with the, um, the group that was assigned to us from CIC Health to support the district on Thursday. And, and what they're going to do is they're actually providing through the, the, DESI's paying for this through the state. But they're, they are going to provide us with a program coordinator who will be working with us remotely, who will be a registered nurse. Who, who will kind of help oversee what the district needs in terms of ordering materials, in terms of helping to communicate the data that needs to go back to DESI. And in addition to that, they're gonna have two people who will be physically here in the district to support us. One will be a, a registered nurse and one might be an LPN or a CNA. And, and so once we have those people in place, then we're gonna be in a position where we can start the test and stay program. They're gonna help us get the, the materials that we need. And so they're, they're finding those individuals for us. One of our nurses had a great idea, which I, I'm continuing to explore and I, I'm not seeing reasons why this wouldn't be effective yet. Is to, for the test and stay aspect of this, as we start with that first, to actually have those two individuals work out of the Millennium Building here. And to actually have, if a student is able to participate in the test and stay because they've been identified as a close contact at school, they could come here, get tested here and then be brought to school as opposed to going to school and then waiting to find out and then potentially needing to get picked up. We thought it, it might be easier to keep everybody in a, coming here and then they could be going to school. So we're still working out the logistics of that, but that at least is part of the logistics that we're talking about, which I think make a lot of sense. But before we start any of it, we will continue to keep families updated. So I think that's everything on the testing front. Is there anything else about the testing piece that you think I might've missed?
Was there a ballpark on when those two, the program director and the two individuals get?
Well, when I told him on Thursday that we wanted to start immediately, he said, well, I'll put you in touch with somebody tomorrow. And that didn't happen. So, you know. That is, I'm a little, I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic, but we'll see.
Can I follow up there? So until those measures are in place, are we still following the close contact protocol where a student would have to quarantine until they had a negative test?
Yes, yep, yep.
If they're not vaccinated.
If they're not vaccinated. And then just before you, before we move on, you were talking about how we're tracking, so WEA, first of all, ninety-eight point eight percent. That's amazing. Thank you. Thank you for doing that. And I know that we can track our own staff, but it occurred to me, because we were just talking about buses, is DBUS reporting to us the vaccination rates of their drivers? Because those are not our employees. Those are DBUS's employees. So I don't know if you have an answer to that question?
I haven't asked them that. I haven't asked them that.
That, that may come later on when we start talking about what DESI's gonna ask for, you know, the, the verification. So that's all.
Good, thank you.
Could I also just follow up on the, on the testing?
Yep.
You were saying that we've got about a quarter of the students have consented. I'm assuming that doesn't, because we don't have more consent forms filled out, that doesn't hinder us from starting the testing. We could start tomorrow.
From the test and stay, the test and stay, it, once we have that, then if they've consented, then we'd be able to start that process. I mean, to that end, if, 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 if a parent hasn't filled out the, the consent form and then they were notified that their child was a close contact it, from school and they could participate, then they could still fill out the consent form. So it's not like, uh, you know, you, you miss the deadline for anything like that. So, um, so that's something that, because it is online. It is something that they could access easily, even, you know, whilst, while talking to the school nurse if, if necessary. And like I said, that, I know that, you know, a quarter of the people have returned this. And I did receive one email from an individual who specifically said they wanted the consent for this one specific thing. Knowing that the consent form is clearly for everything. And in speaking with the representative on Thursday, he again reiterated that, no, there is no, the, the state is not allowing us to change the consent form in any way. So it's on us to communicate effectively to everybody about what test their child would be participating in. So we'll, we'll continue to do that. But once we have it, once we have the tests in place, we could be doing that. And until then, we're still following all of the same protocols. Because really, the only difference is that once we have the tests, then that can be something that someone can do. All of the other protocols would still be, um, would still be in place. So that's for the testing. In, in addition, are, you saw our updated information. The, according to mass.gov, our twelve to fifteen-year-olds are now over eighty-two percent in terms of the vaccination rate and our sixteen to nineteen-year-olds have always been greater than ninety-five percent since we've been looking at this. Now, there is still question as to, you know, is that all of the students in Westbrook Public Schools? Are these students who might be going to other schools? What is that? And, and that, that's something we'll have to peel back and look at more closely. Once we know what DESI wants us to do in order to validate that. But this still gives us an idea as to what, what mass, what the state has collected in terms of actual vaccination rates. And I know there's still been some questions about that because, you know, we haven't asked parents if their children have been vaccinated. This is coming directly from the, from the Department of Health. When people get vaccinated, it's, it's attached to your, where you live. So that's how we know this information. You saw the cases. We, we haven't had our dashboard posted. I will say, part of that is because the people who were doing it are all kind of different this year. And so it, it took me a little while just to even figure out who was helping with that process. We are prepared to start doing that again and to have that information up there. I know, I think there was time last year when all of the separate schools were, we were posting information about the separate schools. I think we're going to stick with just the grade levels, elementary, middle and high, as opposed to identifying cases from specific schools. But that information will be available on our website. Do you have any questions about the data? Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, will the information, the data we got, uh, in the spreadsheet, is that the nature of what we'll see on the dashboard?
Yes. So there were the, that's what was there before in terms of the charts that existed. Because you did see all the tabs at the bottom of the spreadsheet, right? So there's multiple, there's multiple pieces of information there. Plus, I do have the update as of this weekend and today, which is not included in that information. Because we're, we are gonna just post it once a week when it does get posted. So that spreadsheet, you saw that Cheryl Carpenter, who has done tremendous amount of work to create this for us in the first place. She's prepared for next week's, or for this week's numbers, but she hasn't inputted them yet and she will. I think they were doing it on Thursdays and so I think we'll continue to do that. But, um, we have two case, two new cases this week with twelve close contacts spread between the, um, between elementary and the academy. One of the positive cases, uh, I didn't write that down. One of the positive cases is that, was at the academy and, and then the other was at the, and I said, we're not doing this by school. And then I turn around and talk about the academy, but it's because we're doing it by the grade levels, right? So it's like, the high school, thank you, at the high school level. And, uh, where, and the other is at the elementary level.
This may be what you guys asked too. I, I think data that feels like would be important to know would be about quarantines to understand what kind of, if we've had quarantines, what kind of impact we're having on our students educationally. And then the other piece of data that I was gonna say would be important to know has escaped my brain. So let's just go with the quarantine. So, oh, I think, no, let's just go with quarantines for now.
Well, let me give you that information too. Of the, of the close, when you look at the total weekly WPS COVID case and close contacts, in the week eight thirty to nine five, of those ten close contacts, five of them were close contacts from school. So the other five, those close contacts were not from a school, uh, losing the word on, a school.
Exposure.
Exposure, thank you. So the five of them were, were because of a, of, because of a positive.
Other activities.
Case identified in a school. So then they asked five students to, to quarantine. And then in, and then in of this week, last week, the nine to six to nine twelve, there were no exposures in schools. So that was not.
That sixteen number?
Yeah, the sixteen number, that was all from outside exposure. And then so far, the twelve that I have listed, that I just shared with you, seven of them were from school, close contacts, and it was divided between the elementary level. Wait, I can tell you. The elementary and the middle school.
So that means we are having some in-school spread.
We're having, we're having, we're having, there has been no, there's been no transmission. Okay, so none of the close, none of, none of the, none of the, none of the positive cases that we have had came from a close contact in school. What I just shared with you were the, the, the number of students who have been asked to quarantine because of a, an exposure in school. And to this, to, to this date, they have not resulted in a positive case. It's so separating that is.
So I think it would be super, like, really great to see that in there. I think, I think that's what people are looking at, like, is there school spread, right? And last year, we were able to continually say, like, we're really not seeing it. We never really had it formally in the dashboard last year either, that, that piece of information. And I, you know, maybe it's another column that just says, you know, number of, you know, what, what, how many cases.
I will say.
Like breaking out the close contacts.
Yes.
Yeah, I will say, we have to be careful as to how we communicate that though, right? Like, I feel like I can communicate and say, we know if somebody has been asked to quarantine because of an exposure in school, right? But if we start then pinpointing the, a, a close contact that has then become a positive case, we could come really close to violating privacy as well. So, so we just have to be careful as to how we communicate it. Like, we need that information because we need to be able to say whether there's been transmission or in school or not. But how we report it is just something we have to be careful about.
Yep.
Yeah.
The, the five school close contacts, are we even able to ask the question then, following on from that of, um, do we know where they like older students who are potentially vaccinated versus elementary students who weren't or just?
Oh, well, I, I did, I, I, I did say that they were elementary students. I think when I looked, I think I said, let me count it again quickly to see one. So, I'm sorry, I said that it was between a middle school, but it's not. They're, they're all, all seven of those right now are at a, at an elementary school. Yep.
Are those close contacts, those are happening at lunch or classroom? Like?
They've been, that it doesn't say.
Okay.
Earlier, they've, I, I believe that they've all been, I believe that they've all been classroom. They, they've been students that have worked with each other in classrooms and that's the way that that's been established as opposed to, um, in the lunchroom. But we can actually talk about that in just a minute too, once we get past the, the numbers.
I think the reason we're just asking these questions is we want to see what of the strategies and mitigation things are actually working. Because maybe down the line, we will have to
Yep.
make decisions or tweak things or whatever. So I think that's why this, these questions and that information actually probably gives us a better picture of what's actually happening in the school.
Right. I keep focusing on the, there has been no transmission, right? But I, but you're right and I hear you. Like, that's, because that's one of the things that we talked about. Are there any questions about these specific numbers or I'll talk about lunches next?
I had one more quick question. Is, and again, I know we're delicate about the privacy. Is there a way to know whether the positive cases and, like, I'm seeing staff numbers, whether they're vaccinated or unvaccinated?
Well, there are because I'm like, when I looked at one of the spreadsheets, it specifically said that the person was exempt from quarantine, which told me that they're vaccinated, right? But then another one, it didn't say that. So I'm assuming that either they had become symptomatic or they had not vaccinated.
Okay. Just another thing to think about when we're talking about what makes sense to report out. I think, I think that's interesting to people. I just don't know whether we are comfortable reporting that.
True, yep. But that is, that's how we read the data. So like, I know that, but that's what, you know. Okay, so part of our conversation on Friday again was when we were talking about just, you know, when we were having our regular leadership meeting. One of the things we were talking about is we were talking about lunches again too, right? And specifically, our, the resources that exist in the schools are slightly different, right? And I, I did find it interesting that I would have some parents who would seem to want whatever the other school was doing, right? If their school, if their school, the students are sitting at tables, then this person wanted to know why the other schools were sitting at desks. And if their child are sitting at desks, they wanted to know why the other school was sitting at tables. And so we kind of talked about that. And we talked about the fact that they were, all of the principals specifically, and again, this is for the elementary school in a different way because of the vaccination opportunity at the, at the higher levels as well too, was that we talked again about if you are within six feet, when we follow, when you follow the, the flow chart of what does it mean to be a close contact, right? If you're within six feet and you're inside and you're not wearing a mask, or actually just, mask is not even on the table, right? If you're within, if you're, when you look at the first definition by the CDC, it's within six feet, right? Then they layered in the exemptions and the exemptions begin with the classroom. It says that if they're wearing masks, if both individuals are masked, then it needs to be within three feet. So that takes us back to the lunches and say, I had, I had made comments about, you know, COVID apparently not being on buses, not going outside because if we weren't, they weren't gonna be close contacts. And so there is, if they're in the cafeteria and they're within six feet of each other, then they would be a close contact. And so we talked about that with the principals because all of the principals desperately wanted for the students to be able to choose where they sit and not have assigned seats for them at all grade levels, right? So then they talked more about, okay, some of them are able to, to expand to the six feet, some of them aren't. And so we talked about having the students be able to select their seats, but then have to stay in those seats, right? So they might be able to select who they're eating with for the week. But then we're able to kind of make sure that we know where they are so that it's not just a, so that they, they aren't just necessarily picking and sitting with a different person each day. As much as we would like them to have that ability to do that, we said, that's something we should probably revisit. So they're all looking to see, okay, well, if they're, if they're within six feet, then they would, because my whole thing is I kept saying, you need to be able to help the nurses with the contact tracing. And if you can't, then you need to rethink the way in which it's organized. And so we kind of had those conversations. So that's one of the things that we, you might see some of the lunches, some of the students might then have different seating. You know, like, like for this week, they're going to stay where they were or whatever. They might, they might be able to, you know, I, I don't think anybody, I can see maybe, possibly with some of the younger grades, they might actually assign them a seat to start if it's difficult for the student to select their own seat. But the goal is to get the students back to the ability to choose where they would like to sit.
So for now, if they can't stay six feet apart at lunch, then they do have some sort of consistent seating. It may not be assigned to them, they may choose it, as you mentioned, and, and that could vary in length. So they may sit with a certain group of students for one week, and then that may switch up, or it may be for a longer duration of time, and that would be building to building what the principals and teachers feel is best.
Right, and there's, and there's been some questions too about the schools that are, are, have, that have more opportunity for the students to eat outside than others. And that's something that we've talked about as well too, right? Because some of the schools, again, based on their campus and based on their student population, they're able to manage outdoor access, and it doesn't have an impact in the same way. Whereas some of the other schools, the outdoor area that would be used for eating is also where recess takes place for another group. And so if, if you were to take over one area, you could actually then compromise the other student's ability to have recess. So we're just still kind of looking at all of that to see when, when, the, the idea being is that if the, if the, if the weather was cooperating, it would be helpful for more students to be outside in the first place. They're getting outside, I think, in all of the schools regularly, but to actually get lunch outside for that, for that significant period of time, if it has a negative impact on other students' ability to get outside, that's where like, well, then we need to really keep that.
I had to, but it is, it's being done to preserve a fear that in an attempt to conserve their privacy, they won't report the fact that they have COVID. And for instance, I had somebody sit next to me that I've worked with that told me that they weren't, they weren't here because of COVID. But I thankfully got tested a couple of days after, just out of my own want. But I wasn't told about the, I wasn't, I wasn't sent an email about.
Well, let, let me answer that the first part, right? Because if someone tests, if someone tests and they receive a positive test for COVID, then it's reported to us by the state.
Okay.
So honestly, as, as, in some ways, some people find that very scary to know, right? At the same time, it's like that information doesn't remain secret in terms of, it comes directly to the Board of Health and to the nurses through a very specific system that they have. That's if somebody tested, right? So if someone tells you, and I will say, you know, sometimes we, we can't always necessarily believe everything that, that, that people tell us too, right? So if someone is actually telling you that they tested positive, if that truly happened, then it was reported.
Okay.
If it, if, if, if it wasn't reported, then it, then they didn't really get tested, yeah. I don't know if that helps.
No, it does, I just wanted to know what the process was.
And so that is true, and I will say that's one of the things too, that there are times, because the, with the parents and the students also communicating to the nurses, there are times when, when the nurses might actually find out before you get the actual results from the system, because it goes into their database, and that comes to them before you might receive the email or the text that gave you your results. It's possible that the, that, that the Department of Health or the schools receive that information first.
But Chris, I mean, with the, at least when it comes with, to the contact tracing, right? Like, that's for the most part self-reported, or it's up to the nurse from the Board of Health who's investigating it, trying to figure out who this person had close contacts with, right? So I mean, there may have been a judgment call made at some point that Magnum maybe wasn't within six feet of this person or something, and that's why.
That's true, that, yep, yep, yeah, that's true. And, and that also is something that then, that, that's why we are relying on understanding the spacing and knowing where people are, yes. Because it's, whether or not somebody's been identified as a close contact comes from the individual who's communicating with the Board of Health or with the nurse. And if that individual might be younger and not necessarily have, be able to articulate, you know, the stuff that they've been through, that's when the nurses are talking with the, the teachers as well too. Because I'll say, when this whole thing started, that was also, you know, back when we first came, had students back in the building last year, just that notion of talking with teachers about someone's potential medical situation was something that was kind of, you know, walking on some thin ice in terms of what you, what you're doing. And it was finally, we just really looked at it, and it became a, a best practice across the state that you need to be able to talk to certain individuals to help collect that data. So it was then important to reach out and talk to classroom teachers if the person had been in the school, right? To kind of find out what, what that person's day might have looked like, yeah.
Dr. Chu, if you do a home test though, does that get reported? Because that's what I'm just curious, so I'm, I'm just wondering in the incident if somebody's gone into Walgreens and has bought their home test kit, do they have to report it to anybody?
I guess my, my, and this is my, I could be totally ignorant of this, right? Because I have not done that myself, but I do know that even when you do purchase the test, aren't they mailed to someone? Aren't they sent, or you're literally, if it's not a PCR.
You can do a fifteen-minute Binexx at home and you bought it at Walgreens.
All right, so that's, it could be a whole.
But if you don't tell anyone, then nobody knows.
Thank you for helping us, that's great, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Well, I, I honestly, that's one of the reasons I would say they didn't say that they don't trust that. You know what I mean? Like, we're talking about PCR tests. Anytime there has been a, a Binexx Now, which is the rapid test, you're encouraged to then go and follow that up with a PCR test. And it's the PCR tests that are going to the labs that are then reported, so that's the official information. If you're not getting it from one of those, then I think they're basically saying that's not, it's not accurate, because it could be a false negative or positive. That's a whole, that's a whole rabbit hole for us though, honestly, like when we really start.
I just meant more in the sense that somebody, somebody could test positive at home and just decide to stay off school for the next week or two and a year, and just not inform the school at all.
Well, I do know, yeah, if someone was, I, I do know that anytime, anytime the nurses have been in communication with somebody, they've always talked in terms of the importance of these PCR tests, right? So that's, and that was one of our concerns about the symptomatic testing, right? The symptomatic testing, and even, that's the reason why the Binexx Now is for close contacts who are not symptomatic, to then say, okay, well, if, as long as you continue to, to have this negative test, then you could continue to stay in school. And the idea that the symptomatic testing might give you an, an early reading on something, but you, it needs to be followed up with a visit to your doctor and to the, and then a PCR test, yeah. Were there any other questions about the data and about lunches? I think that that was the, that's what we had for our COVID update. I'm not, I, I, I was a little sidetracked there, so I apologize if I, but I feel like it was, it was a little wonky getting the data to you at first, right? Because I didn't get that in before Friday, and then I'm like, well, I wanted to have it, the most updated information. And so then I see that the majority of the information that was actually given to you did go through Friday. So I was able to share the Monday information, but I think moving forward, we'll, we'll, we'll have a, we, we, we have a better system for that. And I think we'll look closely to, to be able to articulate and see if we can pull out what's clear in the close contacts for potential exposures.
Have you gotten any signaling from the commissioner on when further guidance might be forthcoming? We will just be waiting with bated breath, won't we? Every Friday, we'll be waiting for that.
I was going to say, my money's on a Friday.
For that release.
Yep, Friday at three P M. Oftentimes, we get an email in the morning saying hop on at eight AM today.
Or in, or in an hour.
Or in an hour.
So much heads up.
Yeah.
So you just block books Fridays, so it's a flexible day.
Okay, thanks everyone for that. Next is the Westford Academy mascot update. Mr. Antonelli.
He's been working for quite some time, many, many months on this project.
And I see Dean Murphy listed on the agenda. Yeah, she's not, I don't see her on Zoom either, so okay. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, you're welcome, thanks for having me. So this has been a long process. I think most of you know I'm on, I'm a 1986 graduate of Westford Academy, so I'm a gray ghost. And to be honest, the, the story that I was always grew up with was something that came from the Roden Bush Community Center. And it's outlined in, in one of the stories, or the theories behind. And I swear, you know, as a young teacher, people would ask me, as a young coach, you know, what was the, you know, theory behind the gray ghost? And I grew up watching my brothers wrestle and played basketball in the gym with a Casper the Friendly Ghost on the wall. That was the image that was portrayed. And I always came back to the story of some silhouette that was a ghost from some activity that, that, in the, in the, in the Roden Bush Community Center. So I told that story for years, right? And thought for sure, I was telling everybody what the main story was. So then I started doing a lot more research, right? And I've got Jeff Hall, who's a historian in the community, so there's multiple theories. There was a, a coach, Chet Steele, who came in as a new coach, following Coach Archimbo. He was given the autonomy to buy some new uniforms. We wear the Black Knights, he buys gray uniforms, and one afternoon, they were out practicing in the rain, and somebody says they look like a bunch of gray ghosts in the rain in their new, in their new uniforms. Roden Bush Community Center, as I said, some, somebody saw a gray silhouette on the second floor or in the attic, and that became part of the, the story. There was a vote taken in by the Student Council. The Student Council came to the Westford Academy Administration. It was Principal Joyce at the time. And there was a specific show that was on TV called the Mosby's Rangers. It was a Disney sitcom. And in that particular show, Colonel John Mosby, who was a Confederate soldier, was known as the Gray Ghost. So that's another theory that was out there. Blair Benton Court shared with me, and Blair was a longtime marching band director in Westford Public Schools, at Westford Academy. Now he's still over at UMass, UMass Lowell, helping us quite a bit. And there was supposedly a hawk, a gray hawk that flew over the academy, or one of the academies, one of the iterations of the academy over the years. And then the Casper the Friendly Ghost was used and then became a copyright infringement. So that's another theory that took place. Christie Bates, a parent in the school community, shared with me a piece of information about a ship that was named the Gray Ghost during a particular time, during one of the, one of the battles early on World War One. So a, a lot of different pieces and parts came into the research, which was quite interesting. So then I started to do some, some phone calls. One of the things, I, I sat down with Jeff Hall, who shared with me, really, Jeff was the one who shared me with me the story about Mosby's Rangers and the Gray Ghost. So that was another theory that he shared with me, thinking that may be the case, but was not sure. But he said, I said, give me some names, Jeff, give me some times, give me some names, so I started to call people. And one of the first people I called was Ginny Lou Belanger, and she was the person, and I sent this article to you today, which you certainly can pass it around, I know you don't have a lot of paperwork, but this article went around, and I had a conversation with Ginny, and great conversation. And I said, do you recall this change? And she's the one that actually wrote the article about the Lancers, the Eagles, or the Gray Ghosts. Nothing, did not remember that, but then started to give me some additional names. Why don't you call Jack Rubin? Jack was the president of the Student Council at the time. So as you know, the Student Council brought this, this forward, this idea with the Lancers, the Eagles, because they wanted to move away from the Black Knights. And Jack said, well, you know, we had a new coach, the coach was from Springfield College, you know, his, his colors were maroon and gray. And, and the boys that played football didn't like the black uniforms because they made them feel small. So somewhere along the way, that came, came forward. I spoke in February with Kathy Wilder, 1960 graduate, no recollection of the Gray Ghost. Kathy gave me another name, so another lead, so I took another lead, and I called Carol Britton Corsack. She stated that the grades at the high school at that time were seven through 12. And this grade seven and eight students really liked the idea of the Gray Ghost, and they voted more towards that particular than the Lancers and the Eagles. Talked to Thomas Byrne, and he said the students voted on it based on the school colors, which were maroon and gray. And Black Knights was not an option, because I said it was the Eagles, Lancers, or the, or the Gray Ghosts. Ernie Smith did mention, he, he heard something about the, the Mosby's Rangers, but could not connect it to the actual renaming, so it wasn't solidified. So that was, that was the only person that said there, there was a show during that time, but could not say to me point blank, in all of my conversations that happened, that this was clearly connected to that particular show, that particular Gray Ghost. So I want to thank, you know, Betsy Murphy and Dr. Michelle Shannon Mingo for their support along the way. We had many, many meetings, and we ran a couple of surveys. And we shared the theories that I just shared with you, right? A variety of the theories at an advisory meeting. And then we created the, the questions that Derek pointed out earlier. After watching the advisory block video about the background of the Gray Ghosts, do you think we need to have a discussion? Well, 12.9 said they agree, 49.9 said they, they'd like further discussion, and 46% said they disagree, I disagree, we need further explanation. And the second question was, I understand the controversy surrounding the Gray Ghosts and believe that we should, and it was open-ended. 49.9% said they wanted to keep the mask on as it is now. 39.1% said we should reinvent the meaning behind the mascot, and 12.5% said that we should change it overall. So lots of discussion, invited folks, and to Derek's point, we, we did reach out to over 500 students, BIPOC students at Westford Academy. People are busy and things get moved along the way, but certainly, these students were invited to come in for conversations. And I, and I want to express my thanks to Dr. Shannon Mingo, she's new to our, our school community. One of the things that she shared with us, because we had some really great, open conversations, was to the students, one of the questions was posed, well, what do you see, Dr. Mingo, when you see one of those graduation signs on a lawn? You know, the hood with the black face, and she was very, very honest. She said, you know, that sends me a message that doesn't make me feel welcome in the community. But that's me, she said. And she didn't try to sway, convince, she was very just open to the entire conversation and very considerate of everybody, but pushed us to think, right? So if she's feeling that way in our community, there are others that might feel that way in that community. Because the way that ghost looks with the black face and the hood, you know, conjures up thoughts of, you know, perhaps complex clan and such, and that was certainly never the intent. This, this ghost that we have right now came from one of our students, David Conley, was an, was an artist. And his dad actually was the athletic director at the time, and he came up with this, this particular image that we thought was basically harmless, and we started to use that as our ghost. You know, the cross, cross, and the, and the gray face, and sometimes, you know, different iterations of the way the gross ghost came. And many students wanted to create their own ghost, and how, you know, a stronger-looking ghost, and so. So after all these conversations, and from talking with students, talking with folks that were in school during that time, I felt, and I think, Dr., and I don't want to speak for her, but I feel as though one of the ideas we came up with was, can we, can we rethink what the ghost looks like? And you, and, and start new with what the ghost looks like. But there wasn't enough information to say that this particular Gray Ghost was connected to that particular show, which was connected to a Confederate soldier. So the recommendation I bring to you is that I think that that's a valid idea, that there is some history behind this in regards to being the Gray Ghosts. And I know people like, you know, traditions and so forth, and I'm not afraid to, to change certain things. But I just didn't feel as the principal of the building, that there was enough information that clearly pointed to, yes, wholeheartedly, we believe that's, I just think there were too many different cases. And, and being a Westford resident and learning about Colonel Mosby really, really late in my life, probably someone in the range of, you know, 40, 42, 45, somewhere in that range, it was just never. range, it was just never that, something that came to the forefront. So I bring that to you as the recommendation. I have great contacts with the community that provides us with apparel. I know that I could work wholeheartedly with those folks to make sure that we branded appropriately. I want to also thank Jeff Bunyan, because he's done a great job of really using WA a lot more and, and block, a block letter WA. He's very specific about what the colors are and, and how we, how we, how we put ourselves out there as a school community. So I want to thank him very much. We also use the Westford Academy seal, which is a beautiful seal, a lot. We've used that more. But I know our student body likes, from what I can see, the Gray Ghost. Maybe not everybody, and I understand that. But in life, I'm not sure I'm not gonna, I'm never gonna make everybody happy, right? So I know there are people listening tonight that say that, you know, he's a Westford Academy graduate and that's the reason. It's, it's not. It's, it's not the reason. The reason is because I've done my homework and research and we've had conversations with folks. So that's why I, I bring this back to you with my recommendation is that we, we put this forward. We ask for students to come up with some iterations of what the ghost looks like. We have the student body vote on, vote on it. And we stick with our colors, maroon and gray. And we stick with Gray Ghosts. I will not tolerate, you know, we do spirit rallies coming up, you know, painting your face black. You know, we still have the senior T-shirt right now. I want to thank Gloria for her work without me last year to say, you know, we're gonna move that forward because the students get very concerned about some of those traditions. And I thank you for that. And you knew I was gonna bring this forward this year. So thank you for your patience. I worked hard to keep you updated along the way, as well as Superintendent Olson. So that's where I'm at in, in early September. And I didn't want to read it piece by piece, but I feel like I gave you a good executive summary. And, and I'll leave it up to you to have, ask me some questions and we'll go from there.
Well, thanks for coming. Thanks for the thorough summary. I think you are now the foremost expert on the history of the mascot, I gotta say. So you got, and you've documented it too. So, so now we have at least some, some more documented history of the origins or potential origins. As you've said, it's still unclear. I guess the pre-internet age, not everything, I mean, boy, if, if we changed the mascot now forever, we would know, have, you know, very well documented what led up to it. But 50, 60 years ago, we didn't have that as well. So we certainly, it seems like we have the information that is out there and so appreciate that. And I will look to the committee for questions or comments. Sean?
Thanks for doing this, Jim. This is like, because I, I think we probably started talking about this, what, early 2020? So this has been quite the process. And thanks for following up and being here. My question has to do with the cartoon ghost that we've referenced, right? The, the hooded ghost. Is that painted anywhere on school property? Or are there murals of it or anything? Or is it primarily just on?
There is a mural, Sean, in the, in the gymnasium. There's an iteration of one of our art students that asked to do it. It's not the, it's not the one that you see that's on our graduation signs. It's a different iteration of what the ghost is. We've, we've allowed some of those things along the way. My job would be to bring it back to what the school body votes on. And really keep it as one particular ghost that we would, we would utilize around the school. And certainly, I, I hate, would hate to say to the student that we want to, to paint that over, but we've done that before. There, there were, there were several ghosts around that school that were different iterations that we painted over the years. So that's just progress. You need to do things to make sure that we move in the right direction. I can't recall other areas that I know, ladies, maybe you can help me in regards to...
Walk up the stairs on the left, like, there might be, I might be wrong.
Is it like on scoreboards or?
Trustees field, anything there in the bleachers or scoreboards?
All it says, all it says is ghost.
Basketball court, it's just WA on the middle, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
There's a mural by the Black Box that, that has some small figures kind of scattered around in a, in like a landscape, but yeah. I'm sure it's kind of seeped in everywhere.
Yeah, certainly, I, one impact I can think of, if it was to change, would be the Westford Education Foundation fundraiser, where they ghost seniors' yards with the yard signs. And they're a nonprofit, so I'm sure that they have invested in those yard signs and would take a hit to change them.
Certainly I would communicate with them, Valerie, you know, let them know so we could get ahead of that.
Gloria?
I, I really do appreciate the work on this. And, and Jim, as you said, you, you kept me apprised kind of every step of the way last year as, as you were working through this. I also appreciate all the work that's been done by students over the years. I mean, a number of years ago, I remember we had a student who did a capstone project on this. And, and really, I think, kind of ignited some of the discussion about whether or not we should take a second look at the mascot and consider changing the mascot. There've been other students over time who have brought the, the issue to members of school committee and that have ignited discussions about it. So I appreciate all that, that thought and work. I think the history is fascinating. I think it's really interesting. And I, I'm sure you enjoyed all of those conversations with, with folks and reaching back into that history. I, I guess I feel on, on the conclusion, I'll be completely honest, I have a slightly different take on it. My thought is that we don't have to necessarily find historical certainty that the question, that the origins are questionable to decide what to do now. I, I think when we talk about diversity and equity and inclusion, we talk a lot about impact rather than intent. So I can have the, the best of intentions and I can say something with the best of intent and I can, you know, cause a negative impact to a colleague. And then even though I might've had the best of intentions, I've created a negative impact and it's upon me to then repair that negative impact. So I think if, and this was, you know, in your survey, if there are 12 and a half percent of our students who are saying, maybe it's time to change the mascot, it doesn't necessarily mean that there's anything wrong with the mascot or the mascot was bad or had bad intentions or bad origins, or that anybody who has had positive feelings about the, the mascot over the years isn't entitled to all those positive feelings and associations with the mascot. But maybe there is a recognition, and I think there should be a discussion about whether it is time to, you know, thank the mascot for its service and put it into the history of our, our school as, as it is owed and move forth with a new mascot that 100% of our student body could feel proud of, could celebrate, could feel included. I just think this is kind of our opportunity to take a symbolic but real step to saying that everyone and everyone's and, and thoughts and comfort level does need to be taken into consideration. And that if our theme for the year is belonging and we are making a commitment as, as a school committee, as an administration, as a district, to not just be, you know, non-racist, but to really take that extra step and be proactively anti-racist, to really reach out and make sure we are sending the right message about what our core values are, not just to our current students, but to, to their families, to future students, to new people, to our community, to people who might be considering moving to our community, to staff members as we're going out to recruit and trying to recruit a more diverse staff to support our school system, to our alums who have raised this issue over the years. I just think we have an opportunity here to, to make a, a change that would be a positive one. And while, while I, I appreciate the thought behind the, the rebranding effort, I just don't know if, if the rebranding really captures that full opportunity. And, and I think, you know, we should consider taking the, the bigger step of changing the mascot.
Um, so I probably I would just start by telling a story. It's a story, actually, we always say, you know, in, in Chinese, it's like, someone actually brought an elephant and then there are like four blind people go touch the elephant. The first blind people touched the elephant, touched, touched the foot and they say, oh, this is a column. The second one touched the tail, say, this is a rope. The third one touched the trunk and they say, oh, this is a sword. The fourth one touched the ear and they say, this is a big fan. So really like a lot of time when people look at things without actually looking the whole picture or understanding the whole history, the conclusion may just be wrong. I really appreciate that because looks like you are now the expert on the mascot. And then that's where a lot of effort gets into it. I really appreciate that. How to move forward definitely is, is something which we should talk about. But on the other hand, I don't think, and then I don't know if it's even possible to get 100% of students to be proud of while, while, while we're not in a dictatorship. So we're a democracy. You would find that in North Korea. Maybe not here. So, so I say like, this may be a compromise, which people can actually say, you have the Gray Ghost, but you reimagine, reinvent. Because you have done a lot of research and then, and then there is no clear indication regarding like this ties to anything offensive. And then, you know, the image may actually make people uncomfortable and then what the meaning, and then you can actually totally reinvent that. And then that's a lot of things which we can look, look forward to, right? Yeah, so, so, so really like what I'm trying to say is like, a lot of times, it really depends on people's angle. And then people's angle may be like because of their experience and they touch the tail or they touch the foot, but now actually you have done your research.
My only concern is just looking at the numbers. I, I don't feel there's a voice in there, you know, based on the focus groups. I know their, you know, their invite was sent out and 20 students showed interest and two students showed up. And that was really what stood out to me was that I really was hoping to have a louder voice. And, you know, the sad thing is, is why are we having such little interest or communication from this very group of students that really should be, you know, helping us all, you know, understand? And so that, that was my kind of, kind of big question mark.
Looking over at our students like, oh, we have some students in there. I was gonna turn to you next, I'm glad to see you.
I, I was a student in one of those focus groups. I think it's hard because at least the Asian community, I...
Sorry, I don't want to interrupt you. Can you just move closer to the mic?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I think it's hard to, as a, as a member of the Asian community, I think that I can't speak completely for them, but my thought is that at least we weren't, we didn't have any strong feelings when it came to the ghost. So to sit there and give your opinion of, at least for me, to sit there and give my opinion that I didn't see the correlation, was hard because I am BIPOC, but I'm also not a, for someone who's black. So I also don't want to speak on whatever their experience might be. And it's like, it's a genuinely tough conversation to have. And I, there were two other members that were supposed to show up with me, but I was the only one there. And that was an interesting conversation, while it was mind-opening, it was also really hard for me to sit there by myself and do that. And so I think that the holdback or the setback on that is just that we feel as if it's, it's hard to give our opinions when we're not black, but our opinions might be opposing to people, to most of the black community and what their views are towards this mascot. And I just wanted to say also that I think to your point about the 12 point, something percent and making sure everyone feels included, I think that also, to that point, there is 50% of the students that are still saying that they would like for the mascot to be kept the same. And so I think that the solution that Mr. Antonelli provided is a happy medium between that, because it is saying that we as a community take in everybody's views. And so we are still keeping like the traditional aspects of the ghost, you know? It does hold a lot of importance in our school and many of the stuff that we do, but we're also saying, it's offending a group of people, we're going to change the way it's perceived. And we're going to, we're gonna change how we like go about viewing the ghost by having students change the ghost. And so I think that that's actually a really good sort of happy medium, because there is still 50% of the students that want it to be kept the same, even though there is 12% that think that we should be having more discussions on it and change it. So that was sort of my view as an Indian student, contributing my thoughts to this situation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Magna.
I actually think, I think it's been an incredibly long road, right? And you've done all of this research. And I, I feel like this recommendation makes a lot of sense to me. I, I feel like you can still do even what Derek is talking about and perhaps even what Gloria is talking about as well with this next phase, right? Because the first survey asked the specific questions, but I don't know if students really knew or if it was articulated that changing and rebranding, in essence, can also in some ways be the same thing, right? So like as you then move to this next phase of looking to say, okay, let's encourage people to, to, to develop what this new mascot could look like, you can, you can still lean in and try to get as many voices represented as possible, right? Like you can still, I think, continue to ask questions and you can still encourage student voice and still ask questions because you might then have a response. You don't want to ignore the 12% that said that they wanted to change it. If, if it's possible to really engage all of the students again, and the new students are there, right? Because now you have a whole new freshman class with you, that depending on how you go through this process, you could, I think it could be really valuable and it can actually extend the conversation in a way that it's just become more specific now. Before, it was really kind of general and you were trying to figure out what the, what the issue was and really trying to pinpoint where this came from. And now it is possible for you to still get more voices involved and get feedback. And you might find at the end of that whole process that maybe the student body, the majority of the student body says, they think it'd be something different based on the images, right? So I feel like, I feel like it's not necessarily, the conversation's not over. You've moved us very, you've moved us forward, right? Like in the conversations with Dr. Shannon Mingo, the conversations with the students, I feel like we're in a place that you've been very thoughtful about it and you, you can continue to be thoughtful about it as you then put this forward to the student body and say, what does this look like now to you? And then get input. That to me seems like something that you can still do and still be honoring the student voices.
So I have to say I'm, I'm torn because I feel like everyone does make really good points, but, you know, to, to be very blunt, I don't think that it's a slippery slope when the majority decides the rights and feelings of the minority. So I think I'm not willing to say, no, we should not rebrand. But I think it's going to have to be a very thoughtful process and a very engaging process. Because I can also share that when we did the superintendent's search, we had at least one student who commented in there on a DEI issue about percentage of blackface. And the conversation about, well, how much blackface paint is appropriate? And the student's answer was zero, 0%. And I keep going back to, you're only as happy as your happiest child, you're only as comfortable, you're only as included as your least included student. So I think it's a complicated subject. It's been a very long process. I think we can keep having the discussion, but I want to make sure that the discussion is thoughtful and does include more of our BIPOC population, does include the DEI, which I know is meeting next week. I think because COVID sort of derailed a lot of things, there was a lot of stuff that we wished we had been able to better follow through on. And I'd like to get more of the student voice and I'd like it to be more of a broader comm-. And I'd like to get more of the student voice and I'd like it to be more of a broader community discussion before we make a decision. But I want to make sure that it's an open and honest and yes, it's uncomfortable. Yes, it's not. You know, this is something we talk about in the DEI all the time. These conversations are not comfortable. But I think we need to have them as a community before we make a decision. So just some thoughts.
Thanks. And I agree. I think this discussion's been really good and I appreciate every single comment. I think everybody really has their finger on at least a piece of the pulse of this and it's really helpful. I mean, I go to what, a little bit of what everybody said, a little bit, the thing that Gloria said that stuck to me is belonging. And that like crammed itself. I'm like, wow, that's, that's just such a strong notion to hold on to during this conversation. And then Ming Chen brings up the good point about you're not gonna please everybody and, you know, looking for compromise. And Magna, I think you, you know, kind of had some similar sentiments around looking for something that most people can, can rally around. And I think that was good. I would say that whatever change, while we will not get a hundred percent agreement that this is our favorite mascot, whether it be the graphic that embodies the mascot or the name itself, I sure, in, in the spirit of belonging, would want to make sure that zero percent of our students feel alienated by it. They don't have to like it. It, it could be their fifth choice. If we give them five choices, it's their fifth choice. It should be zero percent feel alienated. And, and so that, that's my hope. I don't know what that means for the process unfortunately, cause that's hard, that's hard to guarantee, but.
But it's not, but you can, there are ways in which you can ask those questions, which is kind of what I was implying to, to Jim. Is that I feel like he can move forward to try to, to, to this rebranding process to see it going to, but the end, if you still have students who feel alienated, then we're, it's still gonna be a discussion that we're having, right? But you might actually get, you know, even though I agree with Ming Chen, yeah, I wasn't gonna say that quite the same way that he said it. But, uh, you know, the idea that, you know, just having worked with teenagers forever, you know, the idea that we actually agree on something, I mean, that's difficult. But, um, but I think, I think to Chris's point, what we don't want, and I know you don't want, is people to feel alienated. And so we can, that would, but now you can, now you can move forward with even a more specific conversation, right? And get more specific feedback, I think, from the student body.
And I would also encourage just think about what resource you want to use and we want to use as we do that. Whether it's the, the DEI team or the, for the district, whether it's the town DI committee. I think there's lots of ways to tap into, uh, people who are, have lots of thoughts about, around these things and know other people who would want to contribute and participate. So maybe that's the next level too, is, is pulling in some groups like.
Cause I was thinking too, as Magna was speaking about how difficult those conversations are, maybe some of the recent alums in our BIPOC community would feel more comfortable sharing some of those thoughts too. I know it's supposed to represent, we wanted to represent the WA population. Um, and we want them to have a, a strong say in it. Um, but I was just trying to think of another way to have relations. Um, and I just wanted to add one thing that I, that, uh, one small tidbit that came up, um, that I really appreciated was the idea of standardizing whatever comes out of this. Because I know I've seen like a Dine for a Cause flyer with something a little bit more aggressive for this team or that team or whatever. And those can be more concerning too, I think. So I like the idea that whatever would come out would kind of be across the board.
This, this might also be an opportunity, I don't know, to open up the conversation to families of middle schoolers and elementary schoolers. Because hopefully they will all be graduates of Westford Academy in the next couple of years. And there are obviously other families that are, you know, i- in that community that I think their voice, you know, would be good to have part of the conversation.
Well, I'd just like to add in, I mean, part of Dr. Chu's vision is to have, uh, all of the principals involved with DEI, right? So we're all joining in. Betsy Murphy was a part of our, my liaison. But I think it's important for all of us at each level as a building leader to do that. So I appreciate that vision to move us forward. This work's not done. I've got miles to go before I sleep, okay? Trust me. Um, and a lot more conversation and, you know, you've known me for a long time. The last thing I want is any of my students to feel alienated. It's just not who I am. It's just, I lead with this and I lead with this, okay? And I'll always do it that way. And when I don't, I'm gonna walk out the door, okay? So I will have more conversations and it's not a rush to, to, to figure out what this looks like. I wanted to share with you my research and I wanted to share what, what, what Betsy Dean Murphy helped with and, and, uh, Dr. Mingo helped, Shannon Mingo helped with, cause there were really good conversations. There were multiple conversations, you know? I am, uh, sad that, you know, many students who were invited, uh, didn't attend, but the opportunities were there, right? And Dr. Mingo was ready to do twenty focus groups with twenty plus students. Um, why I don't know, but perhaps to, to Magna's point, uh, didn't feel comfortable. So I have to dig a little bit deeper and figure out. Uh, but I will certainly, you know, share with the student body. I like to call them town meetings where I get in front of them and have conversations and, and I've done it multiple times in the gymnasium where I just walk around and we talk and we, and we, I allow anybody to ask a question and we, and we just put it out there. Um, so those are some of the forums that I will have moving forward, uh, when we can do those kinds of things in an appropriate setting. So, um, but those are some of the kinds of things that I want to move forward with. Um, but it will be, it'll be, again, continue to be a methodical process, keep you informed, um, and keep my, my student body informed.
Great. Thank you. And should we give Magna the last word?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just, you know, we were talking about how hard it is for BIPOC students are, what we're seeing. I was thinking possibly an idea could be if BIPOC students aren't willing to sort of join these conversations, definitely fa-, like BIPOC families would be happy to, like, we all talk about these things at our dinner tables and the parents are more willing to not hold back than students are. So I think integrating them into this conversation, to Ms. Miller's point about, you know, everybody feeling, the parents are important. Like they're sending their kids to these schools. They want to feel like they're accepted in these communities. So possibly looking at that population, while it's not the.
That I, difficult as these conversations are, I appreciate that we're having them. I appreciate that we're sitting at this table and we're having the difficult conversations and people are not shying away from it. Because a lot of DEI work, people are thinking, well, what's our end goal? What's our action item? A lot of the best work happens in the process and the fact of having these conversations, I'm very appreciative. So I thank everyone for being involved too.
We're cleaning our teeth.
We're cleaning our teeth.
Inside joke.
For anyone watching at home though.
Took me a second. I know that reference. Thank you for participating. Now that was great. Okay, new business. The Westford and Bush lease agreement for using Millennium. And for this conversation, I am gonna bring in Paul Fox virtually and Roden Bush Executive Director, Michelle Sullivan.
So while you're bringing, well, no.
They're on their way.
They're on their way?
Yep.
So just before, um, I think we hear from them, I'll just give you kind of the, the quick overview. Is that based on, um, they can give us the background. Uh, I think the, the goal for this specifically is in order to, if we decide that we want to be able to help the Roden Bush, um, at this moment in time, that, um, the town legal counsel suggested that you take a vote to authorize me to sign this agreement along. And then the select board would also be signing the agreement as well too, because their relationship is with the town. Um, but if we are giving them, if we decide to give them permission to use this building, so that's sort of the purpose of this. And it is, I know you like to have information and then vote later, but this is a little bit more time sensitive. So that's just the rush to this, but I think both, um, Michelle and Paul can give us a little bit more background.
Great. Michelle, Paul, we see you. Hopefully you can hear us and we should be able to hear you. I don't know which of you wants to go first, but the floor is yours.
Unpin that for that.
Oh, I can, I can do.
Go first?
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, go ahead, Michelle.
Michelle, but I'm happy to go first here. Um, and I don't want to take away from too much, uh, Michelle's thunder for what she's gonna present later. Um, but first of all, thank you for having us here tonight. Um, a rather unfortunate circumstance happened the other day where, um, unfortunately the building just gets in the way and the Frost Building suffered, but insurance on a catastrophic flood in their building. This has significantly impacted the, uh, Roden Bush at the, or Frost, at the Roden Bushes, or Roden Bush, I guess, at the Frost Schools, um, operations, um, in which we are potentially looking at somewhere between, um, two to four months for the demolition and reconstruction and renovation services that have to take place to restore, uh, the Frost School's original operations. Being that, um, the Roden Bush has always acted as neighbors of the town of Westford, or the internal neighbor to the town of Westford, providing a service to, um, our students before they quite frankly reach, um, you know, Westford Public School System. Um, we, we looked at it to say, you know, what can we do to help them? We do have an internal town lease agreement where they are actually leasing out our buildings. And that's where legal has stepped in, robusting that, um, the school building, or the school committee ultimately has the authority to choose whether or not that they can rent out, uh, the Millennium Building or not. Or, or rent, might not be the most appropriate word, but continue the lease agreement through the Millennium School Building just as another alternative to the Frost School. Uh, so that's ultimately why we're here today. Um, we've taken a look at it with the building commissioner, Henry Fontaine, who has moved forward with what he's needed to, to say that this would be an appropriate place. And I know Michelle's done a lot of further work to the matter as well. But, um, at this point, I would certainly like to turn it over to Michelle. And we know that I'm here trying to wear multiple hats tonight. And if there's any other questions that I can answer, I'm happy to answer them. So again, thank you. Michelle.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you to the school committee and to Superintendent Chu for considering this space over Millennium. Um, I'm not gonna repeat what Paul, uh, told you, uh, but we would be really grateful for the space. We had a time of the incident. We were serving about ninety-eight families. And they are very anxious to get back up in London.
Paul or Michelle?
There's four classrooms, one office.
Okay.
And that serves all your needs?
Um, almost all our needs. We, we have, we won't be able to fit all of our students, no.
I believe there's an age that can only take as a two point nine and older?
No, we did it the last minute, the work of the state and with the building inspector, Henry Fontaine. We were able to, um, get one more room authorized for use for toddlers. So we can bring eighteen toddlers over with us. We just won't be able to make room for the infants at this time.
Can I also just ask then, seeing as we were just talking about using Millennium for COVID testing potentially?
Yep.
Will, we have two separate entrances for that? Just so that we don't have families dropping off, you know, toddlers and, and, you know, preschoolers at the same time that we potentially have.
I, I honestly can't guarantee that. I can't because I have to see what it looks like. I have to see what, we will do everything we can to try to make it make sense to not. To see what it looks like, I have to see what, we will do everything we can to try to make it make sense to not. But because of the, the way that the building is designed, that housed the preschool previously and that we have actually expanded to use some of that space now as well too, cause we've needed some of those rooms. Um, I, I can't guarantee it, but we will collaborate and work together to see what makes the most sense. Yeah.
Any other comments that you wanted to make?
I know, I mean, I, I, you know, Paul came to me about this right away and we were looking to see what was possible. Our space is limited and so I think he did a, a great job. If, if Michelle feels like what we've been able to identify is, is of use to them, then, you know, we'll, we'll do everything we can to, to help out.
And I just had one, I think it's more of a clerical question on the, on the contract or on the agreement. And I don't know who, who wrote this. It says Town of Westford School Committee, but then it has you as this, this signatory or whatever. Yeah, so I don't know how, if that, if that, if that's okay legally.
I will say legal said it could be you, it could be me, you should take the vote. And so, I mean, if you want, we can scratch my name out.
Legally holds water, then I'm okay with you being the designee.
Yeah, they just want, I think they just thought it was important to see, because you have authority over the school buildings. They wanted to just make sure that there was truly collaboration between the select board and the school committee. So that's the reason why they did that.
Gloria, head her up.
Oh, thanks.
Oh, I, I just wanted to, uh, thank everybody, Paul and you, everyone really at Central Office for, for trying to, to figure out how to make this work. I mean, this is a community partner that, that's in a dire straits and we've got families in the community that need help. And if we've got the space and we can help, absolutely we want to. And I, I appreciate all the efforts and of trying to do this in a way that is formal and transparent and, um, and, and appropriate that we, that we can help out. Um, I, I would guess, I had the same question that you did about the, the signatures, um, Chris. So I guess what, what we would be voting on is, we would be voting as a school committee to authorize the superintendent to sign.
Yep.
Okay, great.
We must have been on the same wavelength. I was gonna say the same thing, just that last year I feel like we really saw the value of strong community partnerships. So anything, I'm, you know, wholehearted support for anything we can do to help.
It will, it will be adding, earlier in the evening, we talked about traffic, right? So we'll be adding some additional traffic and right now, you know, I think Ms. McDermott has done a great job having the Abbott drop off go around this parking lot. So we'll just, Michelle, we'll work together to look at times, to look at, you know, what we need to do in order to just help, um, I think communicate traffic as well too.
Yep. And, 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 yep. And Michelle, I was just gonna say, I mean, and I'm just sorry for the upheaval that you guys have been dealing with. And so happy to take this vote, um, and hopefully at least alleviate some of the concerns. But I, I know not all of them, as you guys continue to.
We're probably hoping for a normal year.
I'm just wondering how big Dr. Chu's office is. Can we get a few of the infants in?
So funny. I do spend Wednesdays out in the schools now, right?
You have plenty of practice.
All right, I'm gonna move that we, uh, approve the lease agreement between the Roden Bush and Western Public Schools for the use of the Millennium Building.
It authorized me to.
It authorized the superintendent to sign the lease agreement.
Second.
I got Catherine on the second. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? That's unanimous.
All right, I'm signing, Michelle.
Very much from, from, on behalf of the Children's Center and all the families that, this is an excellent step in the right direction. Thank you so much.
Glad to help. Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the next agenda item is the student enrollment and homeschool update.
So with the, uh, with the enrollment numbers, our, our enrollment numbers have shifted a little bit in September. Um, overall, it's actually decreased, decreased a little bit. Um, we were looking at it, I was looking to see, to identify these places where, um, there was a bigger change. It, it seems at this moment in time that there, the, probably the biggest changes in the freshman class at the academy. Um, and so I talked with, uh, Mr. Antonelli about that. Some of it is, we're also looking to see if the, I just want to verify that the August numbers that I gave you were the rolled over numbers and not still holding on to. Cause remember every year over the summer, we roll the numbers into the next year. So I want to work with our data specialist just to verify that. I do believe that the, the three ninety-five listed in that class in the August date is, is correct. But then they did have, um, some changes in, in late decisions to go to the tech schools, um, decisions to go to private schools. So that just kind of accounts for that. There's increase in the elementary numbers. Um, but nothing that, nothing that required us to reconsider, um, class sizes. But that's the.
That, that, that's probably normal for ninth grade, um, because a lot of families, they don't know that they have to actually download a form and submit to district if they're not coming to, to, to WA. So that probably is not what happened because I, I know there are kids being called upon and then they, their friends saying, they're not coming here.
That's right. Yeah, that's another piece of, thank you. Yeah, that, the idea that it might not be a late decision to go as much as a late communication, that they aren't actually going to the academy. Good point. Thank you. But that's, um, that's our enrollment update and Dr. Cleary has homeschool update.
Uh, real quick, sorry, Chris, I know this is a new one. Uh, UNG under Westford Academy, three students?
Ungraded. So that actually can include students, that's not our, that's not postgraduate. That, that would be the three students. I'm a, I'm go-, I'm, I don't want to make an assumption.
Okay, okay.
But I, it, it could be one of two things.
It's ungraded though?
Yes, it means ungraded. So it could be one of. Yes, it means ungraded. So it could be one of two things. It could, and I'll get that information for you. It could indicate that we do have students in our, in our post-grad program, um, that work in our Reach classroom. And it also could be a student that might not qualify, they might be in between credits.
I see.
In between a grade as well too. So it would be one, it could be one of those two things.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
As far as this is, Sean, we, you know, a student right now who, um, uh, didn't participate. A student that didn't participate, um, uh, in summer school, we may have that student double up in an eleven and, in grade twelve English.
Mm-hmm.
So that student wouldn't be designated in a specific grade.
So next semester, once they meet those credits or something, they might fall into a class?
Correct, yeah, one way or the other.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Yep.
And in regards to homeschool, we've actually returned back to what was the norm. Last year, um, we had an influx of homeschool students because there were several families who didn't feel as though, um, the hybrid model or the RLA model were appropriate, so chose to homeschool the students. Uh, last year we had eighty-one homeschoolers and this year we have forty-four, which is much more typical. The three years prior to COVID, we had forty-one, then forty-three, then, uh, thirty-six. So we're back in, in kind of that normal realm for Westford anyway. And it was actually a lot of fun reading the progress reports for those people who took the one-year hiatus because homeschool students have to report some level of progress to me. And typically then they would reapply for the next year, but in these cases it was a, a one-off. And I commend the parents who took that route because it was best for their families and thought of really creative ways to continue the education for their students. Um, and we're also very happy that they've returned to schools. So that's the homeschool update. And that usually remains steady throughout the year, the number that we have at the beginning of the year.
Thanks for that. Thanks for giving us some insight into.
Yeah.
A group that we don't often hear or talk about. And so that's actually nice to, to hear those numbers and hear the anecdotes. Any questions, comments? Okay. Onto Superintendent Preliminary Entry Plan.
So in the packet, I, I shared with you my, the, the entry plan. This is the, truly the, the, the beginning of the plan and then the findings which take place in Act Three. I do hope you appreciate that. So it, the, it did start off as Act One and Act Two, and then I'm like, oh my gosh, now we're going towards a Shakespeare. Hopefully there won't be an Act Five, but, um, but so, uh, you know, the bulk of that will, will take, those findings, that, that report will then be a full presentation, right? So I'll then, not only will I have it documented for you, but then I plan to present the findings because there'll be a lot of different emerging themes, there'll be a lot of different things that'll come out of those, those interviews and the focus groups that we'll have. Um, the, I, I tried to be as, as thorough as possible in thinking about, you know, the different things to do and try not to be overwhelmed. I did start Act One back in the spring and started, as I was creating the list, started thinking, oh my. But, but successfully, I feel like much of the things in Act One, um, we have, we have been able to accomplish. Now, we haven't gotten into the, the official interviewing phase of that collecting data, but, you know, the first thing on the list was hire a permanent director of finance. And that was just a, I'm very, I'm very happy with, um, the collaboration that we have with, with Pat now, and that's been, that's been great. The, I will say, you're going to hear at the next meeting, you're going to hear from Matt King, who is the, the coach mentor who's been assigned to me from the new superintendent, um, uh, program. Uh, we, we meet, um, for over six hours a month, um, in both, we meet both virtually and in person. Um, it's been really great getting to know him. Um, he has a, he has a tremendous career and, uh, he, he's just a wealth of knowledge. He looked at this and, um, you know, gave me some feedback. He was very positive. He did say he thought the timeline was ambitious. So he did say, he did not think that I would be getting to Act Four as soon as I am planning to get to Act Four. But I, I am really trying to lean into the beginning of our strategic improvement district, our, our strategic district improvement plan. So that's really kind of the, the purpose here. I do feel like that Act Four is going to, to morph. Um, and it's, it, it doesn't, it, it says June twenty-two. My goal would be that we, I'll have, I'll be presenting something to you with our stakeholders. But then of course, any implementation of that strategic plan, because if you look at the last couple of things, talking about the principals, then connecting it to their school improvement plans, that's clearly, that's Act Five, right? That's clearly going to take us into, um, the next year or two. So that's it in a, in a nutshell. Um, any questions or thoughts?
Yeah, I think that, that, it's great, there's a lot on there. I think one thing, it's really important, if you're going to put those little boxes, you gotta start checking those. You get a lot of.
I, it's so satisfying.
I, I always have to check them off for you.
Maybe that was a good idea, maybe.
No, it's chock full, it's, it, it really covers so many things. I, I, I really appreciated that you grounded it in a lot of the things that we, um, drew from the surveys last year as part of the, the search process. So that was really nice to have that as an umbrella overarching guidance for the whole process.
It's difficult because beyond that, right, it's all about what comes out of these conversations, you know? So that's why I'm like, it's important to have that because that's what, that's what the, the community valued in, in the search process, saying this is, this is what we're looking for and this is, this is what we, we value. But then now that I, I'm going to be actually talking with people and asking those other questions, you don't want to lead the, the, the data gathering, right? You want it to really, um, I think be authentic.
Yeah, you're kind of bootstrapping it, like you're trying to develop a plan based on what the community wants, but your plan is to find out what the community wants as well.
That's right.
Yeah, so I think it makes sense. I think for me, the one thing that got, it got me thinking about is superintendent goals.
Yep.
And it seems like, you know, so for the evaluation process, we set goals early in the year, the earlier the better. I think we've been trying to move it back and I think best practice is probably, you know, in early fall, setting those goals. But I think, and I know there's a seminar on Friday for MASC, so for school committee members who are able and want to get that refresher um, on the evaluation process, it's timely because we're having this conversation. I think so much of what's in here seems like it would just go into goals. Maybe not everything, it may, it might not be a one-to-one, but I wanted to ask you about how you see that process in teasing out specific goals.
You always turn that way, so I'm just gonna turn it.
I don't even worry, it's so loud.
Look this way.
I think in a, in a practical sense, working through this plan and be, you, you will be able to evaluate my ability to work through this plan in one way that's, that's more specific than most goals, right? Um, and so that in itself, I feel like is a goal. Participating in, in working through the, the new superintendent program, I think is a really important goal. Then those, I think what those, in, moving into the future, I think you'll have more specific, I think, higher arching goals that will be embedded in the, the strategic development plan, right? The strategic district improvement plan, sorry.
Non-PM.
But.
That was, if you're playing with a switch, try it again. Strategies that we've used with this educator evaluation system for our staff members here in Westford that I'm not, I'm not recommending that you consider this for this particular situation, but just to put this in context is that, um, we were having, we were having people bring in goals, even our first-year staff, whether they had experience or experience in another place or a new role, but have been in the district. What we found is so much of that is on, reflecting on the work that you had done last year and the data in the, the impact that you've had. And that's all part of the reflection process. So for our staff members, we actually, for year one people, we said, your goal is going to be to meet proficient professional practice goal, meet proficient in standard one.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's how it's measured, what does that look like? And, and it's measured by, in May, in your evaluation, you will have met proficient. And then everything in standard one, which is curriculum, instruction and assessment, that's the professional practice goal. Then you also need a student learning goal and we said that that will be try to get proficiency in standard two, which is categorized as teaching all students. Because it is very interesting to try to develop a goal when you don't have anything necessarily to pull on from last year's experience. So, um, I think, you know, even if it's wording, some, some level of goal addressing this plan and then perhaps the, the measurement is the plan of what will be the timeline for the street, strategic plan and the next steps for that being the outcome, does make sense again from the practical point of view.
Yep. No, that's good perspective. And I, I, I think I, I think you're thinking along the same lines where a lot of the, I think the way I look at it, a lot of the goals for the first year really are implementing this entry plan.
Yeah.
But I also know as a committee, we have to have, we have to evaluate on specific things. So the, I guess the recommendation would be that there is some sort of a process to translate the things in here that makes sense to you to say, all right, let's pick these. And we can help.
Yeah.
Tease those out and, you know, figure out what makes sense out of those. But yeah, I don't think, there's not going to be a lot above and beyond because there's so much in here already that, geez, if, if we did all this, that's, that's a, that's a year. I mean, that's quite a year. Have that conversation now and just, we can start thinking about how you want to do that, go about formulating those. If you want to, um, bounce things off of us or work with us to do that, or if you just want to come back at some later date and present a draft goals, whatever, whatever makes sense, we're here to support that. And, um, but I think, and we'll, again, a lot of us will learn more on Friday, but we'll start thinking about like how we, you know, what sorts of thing, inputs that we want to, you know, give to you to keep in mind as you're doing that and think about the goals. But the, I mean, this covers so much that I think, you know, the content, content wise, yeah, this is great. That was my one comment slash question. Um, I'll, anybody else? And I'll come back to myself. Catherine?
And there was just two things I wanted to, um, that kind of jumped out at me as I was going through this. Um, it is ambitious, but go first. I love action, get stuff done. And the, and this came back to an earlier question I had asked in one of the previous meetings. In Act One, um, about identifying SEL goals for all staff and students. Um, I'm just curious as to that SEL goals for kind of students. Um, it's, you seem, is, are we suggesting like you're kind of formalizing it? Is this for the student body as a whole, for a, a school, for a grade level? I'm just kind of wondering, like, what does that look like or is that in progress achieved?
So I, part of it, the way and I envision that is, is prioritizing and making it very clear to everybody that SEL is our focus at this moment in time, right? As opposed to every, like, when you hear, honestly, when you hear, um, when, when we, when we hear about learning loss, right? I start to, I, I start to get really concerned because we also aren't talking about what have they learned, right? I mean, there's, there's a significant amount that the students have actually learned through all this time. And yes, we know that they, that, that traditional education has been interrupted, but we first must really focus on where they're at emotionally, where they're at in order to access their learning. And that in so many ways is embedded in the work that all the teachers are doing. But we need to then be as a district, working with the principals to make sure that we're sort of taking that academic pressure that sometimes gets put on the teachers off of their shoulders as well too, so that they can really make sure that they are committing to that work. It's not a specific curriculum as much as it's, and it's an, it's an ongoing reminder.
Well, when it says about clearly identifying goals though, to me, I would read that, that there are, not necessarily a curriculum, but that there are, you know, specific ideas, targets, suggestions, you know, rather than just kind of the broad thing of saying we have to put SEL at the forefront.
Right.
It's easier to say, but it's not always easy to do. And when you look at the size of our district and all our teachers and all the different buildings, you know, things can be open to interpretation. And so I'm just wondering, you know, I, I still feel very strongly that we should be, you know, I, like you say, clearly identifying a bit more of these goals rather than it just being a very broad thing. Because again, we do know we are in very extraordinary times. There are a lot of kids in our buildings right now who have various issues with a lot of anxiety that aren't always easily identifiable. And, you know, if you're saying it here i- as part of your thing, so, you know, your plan about identifying it. So I would really like to see if, if we could have a bit more clarity on what that looks like in a school. What does that look like in a first-grade classroom? What does it look like in a sixth-grade classroom? You know, the whole point of school committee is that we're able to see the impact of what goes on here.
Right.
In the classroom for a student. And I would just really like to kind of get a bit more clarity on that. I mean, you've, you've set it out here, so I don't know, is there a document? Is there, you know, training days going on, meetings going on? I, I, you know, I know you're saying it's embedded, but it's very easy to, you know, like I said, interpretation. So that was just one, one point. The other one was when into Phase Two, I'm just, you talked about an equity audit. Is this your equity audit, what you're suggesting, or is that separate to kind of the Phase Two? You were talking about, eh, conducting group interviews with various stakeholders about, you know, what does equity in WPS?
It's not. In short, that's not the equity audit.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's part of me gathering the information, but the equity audit is, is going to be a very specific process that it will be multi-phased as well too. And that's going, we're going to find, I believe, we're going to find that, uh, as a very clear need and strategy that's going to, that's going to come out in the findings, right? So there are, I, it's part of the DEI team, it's things that we're going to be talking about as well too. What we have access to as free resources to us that we could be utilizing in order for us to begin the, the reflection process that would be part of an equity audit. There's also going to be moments, we're going to be deciding whether or not we need to work with outside consultants to help us with other aspects of the equity audit. And so I feel like that, that information, that, this is not the equity audit that I, that I spoke about in the past. I, that is a different, that's a completely different process.
Do you see the equity audit kind of running alongside your entry plan? Because I think some of the information you might get from that equity audit would really help you in, as you carry on.
I mean, I, I'm not anticipating using any of the tools that I, that I think are, are, that are good resources for an equity audit in this entry plan. But to what you just said, I do think some of the findings from this entry plan will be able to be used in the equity audit.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep. The, then the only other thing that I might suggest is, I know, you know, when you're having these conversations, there are families in this community who feel that they can't speak up for various reasons. And so maybe you might consider some sort of a third party or a way of anonymity or, or something to get some of this information because it's, you know, it's not always easy for various reasons for some of these families. And, and so maybe just kind of be mindful in how you can get very honest and authentic information, um, going forward. Because I think that would be really important. Because they're almost like, you know, there are twelve percent, you know, there, some of these families are, if we were, if we're going to be a, you know, belonging community, I think it's important that their voices are heard in, in this. There we go.
Lisa?
Um, so to that end, jumping ahead to, um, Act Four, I did want to make mention of the stakeholder groups.
Spoiler alert.
Spoiler alert. Member, um, stakeholder groups for the strategic district improvement plan, also including the CPAC because they have a statutory responsibility to us and us to them. Uh, but beyond that, because I'm super excited about the idea of the strategic improvement plan, there are resources, I can send them, um, to an email to everyone. There are resources on the DOE's website about strategic, creating, plan aligning systems, implementing, there's a lot of resources there um, that, you know, you can sort of flip through some of their recommended processes. So as we start thinking in that direction, um, that that's a good sort of brief, because we've talked about, how exactly does a strategic plan happen? Who is supposed to be running those things? Where do the stakeholders come from? So I think as we start to think about that, that's a huge undertaking and there's a lot of research on the DOE website. And then I was just going to add that if we have any questions about how we do our evaluation this year, we have great partners with MASC. Um, and MASC and MASS, and I can't wait to meet your mentor because, I don't know about you, but I kind of love our mentors at MASC. I think they're great people and they're an amazing resource. So I'm really excited to meet your mentor. So I think we can use those two groups to talk about, well, how do we take this? Because clearly these are your goals, but how do we then put together that paperwork that we are required then to, you know, do? So I think they would be a good resource for us to figure out how exactly to translate one document into something that we actually can, you know, do the rubric on in May.
And I would just add, I mean, I. And I would just add, I mean, I, yeah, I'm excited about the strategic, let's see, you have it, the strategic district improvement plan. I think we've been saying strategic, just strategic plan. So I, I think there's excitement. We've been waiting for this. And, and just, we should talk about how, like, basically the involvement you want the school committee to have, how much of that, you know, it's, I think it makes sense for it to be in your, you know, under you because you're going to be in this position for a while. But I also think the school committee would really appreciate the opportunity to have a lot of, a lot of input and a lot of involvement in that development.
I definitely imagined that you would have opportunities to participate in some of the working groups, just not collectively as one body that's deliberating during.
And we've talked about, maybe there's a subset of, maybe there's a subcommittee of this, of this committee that is sort of charged with going off and representing us in that development work. So, so something to think about and talk about. Gloria?
Yeah, I think we were, they can all on the same lines there, Chris. Obviously, all the things that everyone's already said. Thank you for the ambitious timeline, all of the detail here, the, the focus on data gathering and reporting, all of it. I was particularly interested in, in the series of questions that, that you had at, at the, I guess, part of Act Two. And I thought those were just very thoughtful questions to get at the kind of information that you need. And along those lines, please let this body know what we can do this year to support you in this process. And if there's anything we can do to remove, how did you word it, barriers or obstacles that we can remove to help you be successful in this process. So please let us know.
I appreciate that. One of the things that I do intend to do is, is try to set up opportunities with each of you to ask those questions, right? And then when I'm working with different groups as well to, to find other opportunities to do that. But that's also the challenge because there are so many questions that we could ask, right? And then you get involved in a meaningful conversation, but then I, I'm actually trying to remind myself, okay, limit the questions because you, you only have so much time to be in conversation. And I'm verbose and can go on for a long time, so I have to limit those conversations, right?
They're good questions, though. Those are good. And I'm glad you said that because it's, you know, you're coming in, you're at a crazy time. And I know you already realized the full, as if you didn't already, the full heft of the job that, that you're undertaking. And you do, you know, we are here as a support because we want to see you succeed. I think you've probably already realized the support you have in central office. It sounds like Matt King is a great support. So just like urging you to just feel supported and reach out to people and like use all of that. Because it's a lot, it's a big job and, and everybody's pulling for you. So.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you've done so far and appreciate the plan.
I just had a quick, this should maybe be an easy question. Well, like, everybody's appreciating the depth and I do. I just wanted to ask one little question of, do you plan to do like, I, I mean, I know, I see some focus groups and stuff, but do you plan to do like kind of the monthly open house of your predecessor or some other version of connecting with the community?
That, that's, I wanna find out what I think would be the most useful way. That's kind of.
One of your findings.
One of my things that I wanna ask, I did, like, I've, right now, I haven't entirely committed to this, but I sent my first update out on August 1st, and then I decided, well, I'll send the next one out on September 1st. So I'm trying to send like an update. I used to send them out weekly, right, as a building principal, but the buildings are doing that. So I do think that that's overkill, right? And I think that's too much information for families. So I'm trying, so just the friendly updates. I mean, of course, an emergency communication, I'll send out whatever, but that's one of those things that I'm like, I think I'm, I'm just gonna try that and see how it works, but then collect data and figure out if that's too much, if that's not enough. And I feel like the conversations is also something I wanna hear from more people. Because what I do know is that I think that can be a great opportunity for some people who can attend. But it's not necessarily then, you know, is it truly open? Is it truly an open opportunity? So are there other things to do? Would it be, you know, this year, I'd rather spend more time trying to meet, like, building SACs, right? Or, or the PTO meetings that, that they're having if there's, or going to, you know, a library meeting in town and trying to be available to other groups that already have, you know, a group of people that are, that are engaged in that. But then making sure that I'm finding ways to reach out to people who might not be engaged and.
You also do the Westford cat.
I'm doing the Westford cat right now.
You mentioned an app before over the summer. I don't know.
That's, we're still exploring it. Yeah, so it's still in, we, we need to figure out, we're still meeting with them. We actually, I might have a meeting this week. We're, we're looking to see what the cost of, of this program would be compared to what we already have. And then we also need to do our due diligence to see, okay, do other programs actually offer these same things? So it's still, it's still, we're still exploring it because it's still about ease of communication. Yeah. They're telling us that they're the only ones who do it. So we have to find out, is that really true?
They sounded fun, though. Or like, you know, they sounded, they, yeah.
Okay. Well, thanks for that. We look forward to, we look forward to seeing Act Five, really.
Act Five will be a musical.
Can we get Mike Tyers in to duress?
Okay, next item is the personnel update.
Oh, that's me again. I, I will, so in, with the regular personnel update, you have the, you have the spreadsheet just showing the, some of the changes. We, we have had some new hires. Let me find it here. I did want to note that both Mr. McHugh at WA has, has, has submitted his intent to retire at the end of this year. So I know a lot of people who've had Mr. McHugh at WA, they'll be sad to hear that he's retiring. And Ms. Vierango actually had submitted her retirement and she, she's retired. She decided to retire before the beginning of the school year, but since the last time that we met. So I just wanted to highlight those two things. In your packet, I was able to include a draft for a human resources generalist position. So what I would like you to do is if you could review this, this, based on our, we had a consultant come in last year, work with HR and, and working with payroll and doing a crosswalk between trying to figure out, you know, giving us, giving us feedback and our structure. And it, it was recommended that we actually needed some additional support within our human resources department. Specifically, I, I feel like even the, the COVID experience has had a tremendous impact on the amount of work that they have to do. And that has not necessarily changed as we've come out of it. And so we've drafted a, a generalist, human resources generalist position that I would like you to consider and vote upon this job description at the next meeting. So I wanted you to have time to look it over and if you had questions, knowing that that was something that we would like to, to explore implementing, then, you know, I can answer those questions before the, you know, before the next meeting, at the next meeting, or if you have questions about it.
Just a reminder, how many employees do we have approximately?
In HR?
Yeah, no, in, in the district.
Oh, in the district. We have close to a thousand.
And how many HR employees do we have?
Two.
Would you look at hiring like ASAP then, if we vote on this then?
Yeah, well, we looked, we, we, we're, we're trying to look at the, the organization that we have at this moment in time and figuring out, okay, what would the additional support really look like? This would be a new, this is a new job description. So this job doesn't exist. We have a human resources coordinator and we have an administrative assistant at present, both of whom's job descriptions have, 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 have been. Have come through the committee. This would be a new, this is, this is, this is a new delineation of the responsibilities. So what, whether it would look like, whether we would have a human resources coordinator and a generalist, and then we would need to look to find a, a new administrative assistant, or whether we would look to be finding a, a generalist. This is what I'm not, we don't know specifically how, how, how that would be best executed at this moment in time. But I want to have the opportunity. So the goal would be, yes, if we can, if we can thoughtfully consider it for the next meeting, would be very helpful for us.
Chris, before then, I don't know if you or Pat can shoot us an email or something with whatever like the cost, the implications of it might be. Just so we have like an idea. Obviously, it's gonna be a, a range, right? Depending on experience and like, but.
Gloria?
Thank you for the advanced kind of informational aspect of this. Just a procedural note for the future. I think it's helpful if that's noted on the agenda, that it's being provided for us for informational purposes and that there'll be a vote in the future. We got in the habit of trying to do that last year to have something on the agenda once and then, so when it came on the agenda the next time, also it, it just provides notice to us, notice to the public. So I appreciate having it and that it's in the packet. But if we can just note it on the agenda in the future, I think that's helpful.
I, I, I will say, on Thursday, when we posted the agenda, I, I wasn't sure if it was gonna be ready for me to share it with you. So I didn't know if I would be going two more meetings out. So that was the reason why I said I'm just gonna share it in the personnel update. But I, I hear you and I appreciate that. But that was the rationale behind it.
Okay. Thanks. And now we are on to approval requests.
One by one, as usual.
One by one, until next time.
Motion to approve payroll warrant number 2212SP in the amount of $1,332,625.94, dated September 16th, 2021. Sorry.
All in favor? That was Alicia with the second.
Motion to approve expense warrant number 2212SE in the amount of $859,211.16, dated September 16th, 2021.
All in favor? Unanimous. Alicia with the second on that one as well.
Motion to approve school committee regular session minutes dated August 16th, 2021 and August 24th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Question on that. Actually, the, the, the date that's in the packet is actually August 30th, not August 24th, because August 24th was the board of health meeting. So the minutes in the packet are 8:16 and 8:30.
Okay, friendly amendment to the motion, 8:16, 2021 and 8:30, 2021. And I, I, did we get a second? I missed that.
Alicia seconded that.
And I have a, in the, just a friendly amendment, a friendly, not amendment.
Reminder?
No, like, what's a change to the minutes? Like, the, the, the date, the names are wrong. Edit, thank you. Sean and Alicia are married.
Sean Mellon.
Wow, how did we not catch that one?
And Gloria's virtual for the 30th, but you were here the 30th and virtual the 16th.
Did I take offense that I didn't get invited to the wedding?
We have a motion, we have a second, we have amendments. Anything else? Alright, so this is to vote on the amendments for the 16th and the 30th as amended. All in favor? That's unanimous as well. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Gloria with the second. All in favor?